Conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM. Good evening, everyone, and I have your attention. It's now 6:00 PM, Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, and I call this regular meeting of council to order here at the Social Scene in Victoria Beach. I respectfully acknowledge that we are meeting on Treaty One Land, the traditional homeland of the Anishinaabe, Cree, and Assiniboine Nation, Dakota, Assiniboine, and Denai people. Excuse me? And the traditional homeland of the Red River Métis. I have been remiss in not reaching out to our indigenous and Métis neighbors and residents, and I have started doing so by phone and by email. Relationships take time to build, to reconcile, and to work toward collaboration, and I have work to do on behalf of council to build those relationships. Our entire municipality is on Treaty One and Red River Métis lands. That's our cottages, our beaches, and our great spaces. We are all stewards of these lands. We are also part of the indigenous and Métis harvesting area 34B. Thank you, Frank, for setting up here at the Social Scene, and thank you to all of those who are attending in person and virtually. A reminder that this council meeting and the public hearing that is part of this meeting are being recorded and will be uploaded to our website for viewing. Can I please ask anyone who is attending virtually to mute your feed until it is your turn to speak? And I will be going around, I will be making sure that our... Oh, nice. I'll be making sure that those who are attending virtually get a chance to speak if they wish. Any introductions around the table?
Ian Chatsey. Steve Axton. Long Turner.
Kenny McMorris, mayor.
Erwin Kuckler. And Graham Rundle.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are you all right there, Steve?
All right.
Okay, come take the coat off. All right, we will move on to the agenda. Be it resolved that the agenda be adopted as presented, may I have a mover, please? Thank you, Ian Second, Erwin, thank you. Any additions, gentlemen? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. Moving on to the minutes. Be it resolved, the minutes of November for 2025 regular meeting with council be adopted as presented, may I have a mover? Ian again, thank you, Second. Graham, thank you. Any comments on the minutes, gentlemen?
Nope. Nope, they moved to next.
All right, hearing nothing further, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you, gentlemen. All right, we are moving into our conditional use public hearing. So it is now 6:05 PM, and I open the conditional use public hearing on the matter of a shoreline protection project on part of Patricia Beach and Arthur Beach. For the Planning Act, registered letters were sent to residents within a specific radius of the project to advise them and solicit their feedback. Our zoning bylaw calls for a conditional use permit application for this type of project, which triggers a public hearing which we are having tonight. This project has been on our website for residents to review. A link to the project has been put on our official Facebook page. It has been posted in our municipal office and available for residents to view there. Council will hear tonight from any resident or person who wishes to speak to this matter. Virtual presentations will also be heard. Comments have been received. I stopped looking at emails at about 5 o'clock this evening via email, and they have been added to the record of this hearing. Council has asked the Shoreline Advisory Committee to review the video of this hearing, to review the proposal, and provide us their opinions and recommendations prior to our December 9th council meeting. Council is here to listen to your comments on this specific proposal only. All speakers have 10 minutes, and we appreciate your cooperation and consideration of others who also wish to speak. All comments must be directed through the chair, and if we feel that the subject matter has been raised and heard, we may ask the speaker to focus on new information not already brought forward. I and council expect all presenters and attendees to be respectful of the process and of the speakers. No clapping, no cheering, no outbursts will be tolerated. Should there need to be a continuation of this hearing to another date and time, we will do that at the end of the meeting. In the interest of everybody staying awake and alert, we would like to stop presentations by 8:30 this evening, please. All right. Coming up next, or first I should say, on the agenda is Laura Jones and Wolf Craft, two other proponents of this project.
Can you hear me? You okay? Yep. Okay. Hi, everyone, I'm Laura Jones, and this is...
Wolf Craft.
And we're here to present brief, very briefly, on this project proposal. As you've mentioned, it's already been mailed out to nearby residents and also posted online, but we thought that we would give a brief overview and, if you don't mind, putting up photos just so that we can walk through the site together before the other delegations. Thanks so much. And this is an erosion protection measures proposal. It will be fronting approved approximately 305 to 119 Sunset Boulevard, non-inclusive. The purpose of the project is to protect the base of the sand cliffs against wave erosion and to provide stability for the lower bank within the confines of limited private budgets, as this is a privately funded project proposal. The project is consistent in design and application as what's been constructed in front of approximately 37 property frontages and road allowances, plus some extra road allowances along King Edward, Alexandra, and Kanawha beaches over the past two years. So people in the community are likely very familiar with the style, the size, and the application. There are some photos up here. So the first one is showing King Edward Beach, looking from the King Edward Road Allowance down the beach toward the Alexandra Road Allowance with the toll protection against the bank. After it was constructed, I needed a prescription on my glasses here. And the second photo is showing from approximately halfway down King Edward Beach, looking back up at the road allowance more recently. And that's what the work looks like from up top. And this would be very, very similar, it would be the same type of application. And then moving along. We'll go through this, and then Wolf will speak a bit to the design. But this is the south end of the project site. This is at about 127, fronting 127 Sunset. There are four properties south of the Arthur stairs that have expressed a desire to go ahead and install toll protection. So this would be the southern end of that space. And if you go down a little bit more, this is showing south of Arthur stairs. This area has come up over the past couple of years, and talking about toll protection, it's a point of frustration for the community that this is a failed past effort, that my understanding is that it was a joint project between the municipality and some residents designed by an engineer hired by the municipality. Unfortunately, the boulder size was small, and so this failed. One of the real benefits of this proposal is to get this cleaned up and fixed up so that that doesn't reappear from the same type of wave action, and it would increase the usable beach space by over 20 feet compared to what's there now, approximately. So this is just south of the Arthur stairs, and we could move along. This is the same area, as you can see, the smaller sized rock south of Arthur stairs, and this area would be cleaned up with the proposal. This is looking from around the existing rock protection that's north of the Arthur stairs, looking up north towards the Patricia Road Allowance. This existing protection, I think everyone here is aware of this, it wouldn't be adjusted with this project proposal. You can see that a lot of sand has now moved over top of the base of the protection, and we were out on site today and noticed that actually a lot more has, even since these photos have taken with all the wind that we've had and the low water, which is really nice. So the work would tie into this existing protection, but not have as big of a footprint. This is another photo showing from, as if you were standing, and that protection was behind you. So this is looking at Patricia Beach and at the site, you know, the way it was this fall. This would be protected, it's not, not everyone along this stretch has signed up wanting protection. Three out of five of the property owners, one of those having a double up, have wanted, are wanting to install protection. And this is looking almost as if you were standing at the Patricia, or out from the Patricia Road Allowance, looking up at the bank. And this is another real benefit area of the project from our perspective. What you see behind the bank is the Sunset Road Allowance that actually is one of the few places along Sunset that still has enough bank left that it can be used to access Scott's Point, which is a beautiful asset to the community and also can be used by vehicles at this time, was used for, I believe, for the fire smart efforts that took place last year. So that's, that would be Sunset at the top of the bank. And if you go down to the last photo, or the last page, that's, you know, showing from the top of the bank, that Sunset that we still actually have left. And the last photo is showing from the top of the bank, looking down south down the beach, and that would be about the approximate end point of a toll protection project. So that gives you, oh, and there is one more page, thank you, one. And this is Scott's Park. So this is a fantastic municipal asset that's available to the entire community to go and walk and to be able to enjoy taking lake views. And currently, it's accessible because we still have some of Sunset Boulevard remaining. That's definitely at risk. And so a real plus to this project, not that toll protection alone can save that section of Sunset, but an effort to curb erosion and to provide some toll loading will certainly help and help to slow it down. And this is a real critical access point for the community to get to Scott's Park. And so is that, I don't know, Wolf, if you want to speak to the design in general. Like I mentioned, folks are probably familiar with it because it's the same approach that's been taken so far in three earlier projects over the past two years, but anything I might have missed?
Thank you, Laura. So for those of you that don't know me, my name's Wolf Craft, and I run State Haven Builders out here. I've been doing shoreline erosion bank protection since about 2007, and we've done in Victoria Beach, there are more than three kilometers of protection so far, with no adverse effects at this point right now due to erosion of sand on the beach or some of the other issues that have been raised. The first component that I'd like to talk to towards is the Arthur Beach south area. That area was revetted through private funding in conjunction with Dean Gould from the province, engineer with the province, and with the municipality. That project was, work was done in approximately 2008, 2009, and ultimately in 2010 with the storm, the majority of that project failed. Basically, the size of rock that was used for that protection works was too small to withstand the force of the wave action from Lake Winnipeg, and it resulted in the rocks being screwed across the beach. So the first part of our proposal is going to be to address that area. What we're proposing to do is to pick all the smaller rock as much as we possibly can up off the beach, reduce the footprint that's on the beach right now, which is ranging between 30 and 40 feet from bottom of the bank out towards the lake, and we're going to reduce that footprint by less than half of what it is right now. We're proposing the footprint will extend out 12 feet, plus or minus depending on the exact configuration of the bank onto the beach. So you're going to reclaim a lot of area to walk on. Naturally, removing the rock will lower that area. We're very fortunate right now in that the water level of Lake Winnipeg is low. And what we're finding is that a lot of sand now is drifting up against the bank area over top of rock work or whatever's along the bank, or just adding to the sand that's on the bank. The ARAM has, three years ago, they have a fund set aside for beach nourishment. So if it's found that there's an issue with sand along these projects that we're doing, the fund has been established to re-sand the beaches or to haul sand in. So that concern that's been addressed in the past is something that's been mitigated with that. So far to date, we've got approximately 1,000 feet of shoreline that we're looking on revetting. We've engaged, we being myself and Tim from Freestyle and the homeowners, we've engaged the services of Ench Tech to review our design, which is very similar to the design that was used along King Edward, Alexandra, and Kanawha beaches. It varies a little bit due to the fact that the actual ground conditions vary compared to some areas where the clay is closer to the sand and other areas the sand is further down. So he's taken that into consideration and come back with, I believe there was 12 different design factors that he's factored in along the beach that we would follow. So the engineering component of the project has been addressed. Today, we met with an engineer that is part of the Shoreline Erosion Technical Committee that used to be part of the Manitoba government, that would incorporate and look at projects that were being proposed. That component is no longer a part of the government, although Jeremy Feevelkorn has taken over that position on behalf of the government. He's an engineer with the provincial government. We met with him on the beach today, and we also met with him last year at the project on Kanawha. We are expecting written confirmation that he is in agreement with the fact that this proposed revetment will have protection for the further erosion of public and private properties. And he was very happy with the design and the methodology that was used on the other projects. So we're awaiting that response from him. Of note, on this project, I've already mentioned the Arthur Beach, that that area would be cleaned up. At the Patricia Beach stairs, the amount of public property that's still available there, on the south side of Patricia stairs, that those two properties were just recently surveyed, and there's less than 10 feet of property between the survey marks of the private property to the edge of the bank, and the edge of the bank has an overhang of approximately 2 to 5 feet. So once that erodes from the top, you're going to be very close to private property, at which point the, any further erosion protection along the frontage of private properties would become the responsibility of the private property owners, so the continuous protection and looks could be compromised by that, because then they would have the right to protect their property, and it would no longer fall under public scrutiny necessarily. On the north side of the Patricia stairs is the only remaining access to Scott Point. At that point, there's approximately 15 to 25 feet of public land left, again with a severe overhang. Once that property were to be eroded away, there would be no public access to Scott Point anymore. That area has been of concern for fire danger and also for use, the recreational use here. So I feel that that is something that should be addressed, and that's something also that was addressed in the Baird Report as being one of the number one critical areas that should be revetted or protected. What else did I got here? So this process of revetments has been a very contentious issue in the community since the 2010 storm. The municipality has spent in excess of $700,000 on engineers and studies on this, and there is, financially, there's been no solution that's come about that does not involve some sort of hard revetment or hard protection. The property owners are worried about their future, their legacy to their children, and they should be able to protect that legacy. Down the road, the Baird Report does consider other mitigating factors, such as rock roins, sand nourishment, and other types of structures. Again, these all cost money, and where the money is going to come from remains to be seen, other than the sand nourishment, which the municipality has already addressed. So I don't know what else I can say. We did, like I said, over three kilometers already with success at this point, and we're hopeful that these property owners will be able to have the same protection that other owners around Lake Winnipeg and in Victoria Beach have been afforded. Thank you.
Thank you. I did allow you to go over your 10 minutes, because you are the proponents, and I want people to hear what the project is about from your perspective. Do you have anything further to add so that we can, anything further to add?
I don't think I have anything at this time, although I'm sure there's questions that may arise, and Laura and I and Tim and Char will be available to answer any of those questions that, as you see fit, as the meeting proceeds.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. We're not here to ask questions, we're here to listen from council. According to the Planning Act, Steve, and according to our bylaw, we're here to listen. Do you want clarification if anything? You can certainly ask for clarification, but we're not here to debate your question necessarily.
There wasn't a debate, I hadn't questioned the actual project. Okay.
All right. We can move on then to our next presenter, which is Trish Richardson. I don't know if Trish is here or if she's virtual. Trish Richardson?
I, I am here.
Okay, thank you. Trish, you're... Your turn to speak, please, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, council, CAO, and fellow community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, not just as a backlatter, but as a longtime member of the Victoria Beach community. I know recent decisions like the attempt to pass by law 1655 have made it feel like our voices and mine are not welcome, but I'm here because I care deeply about this place, and I believe we all share a responsibility to protect it together. My family has cherished Victoria Beach for generations, ever since my great-grandmother first came to Fourth Avenue. She always said, "The sun always shines over Victoria Beach, especially on the beaches." These beaches are more than sand and water. They are gathering places, wildlife corridors, and cultural landmarks where generations have met in the sun, at Sunset, and under the stars. They hold our community's core memories and continue to welcome new ones. They connect us to the land, and once lost, they can never be replaced. Patricia Beach is under threat. A small group of shoreline owners is pushing to dump rocks on public land, not to protect the beach, but to shield their private property. This is not preservation, it is sacrifice. My family and I are not against protecting shoreline, but protection must go hand in hand with thoughtful science-based stewardship of the beaches. It must be led with care and concern for all community members, not rushed through in a quick meeting on a dark night at the lake when the community isn't around. Let me be absolutely clear, this proposal will destroy Patricia Beach. The Baird Engineering Report states plainly that the plan to armor the bluff tow rock with revetment at Patricia and Arthur leads to one inevitable outcome. The beach will eventually disappear. This is not speculation, it is science, and it is identified as the most damaging option in the report. To even begin to offset the harm, the community would need to construct groynes and commit to ongoing sand replenishment, measures that are not included in this proposal. And we are unsure of the municipality, how they will afford this. The community is left responsible for this. The original Baird plan, based on extensive study, includes groynes in the water and sand nourishment. By contrast, the current plan is the bare minimum, rocks dumped directly onto the beach. Science shows this will scour away the sand and erase the shoreline. The current plan doesn't even consider the beaches. It states that it will only protect the property behind. This proposal cherry picks from the Baird Report, ignoring its most critical warning. Armoring the bluff tow with rock revetment at Patricia and Arthur, the beach will eventually disappear. Sand replenishment is excluded, groynes are excluded, yet this plan accepts the loss of the beach for our community and has made the decision with no pure, true consultation and minimal public input. And beyond the science, council must remember its own zoning bylaw. The bylaw specifically prohibits developments that interfere or with or unduly compromise the character, enjoyment, or sustainability of private or public property. It further requires that existing recreational uses and areas should be protected from potential incompatible land uses that may threaten the ongoing viability of these areas. In accordance with the development plan, dumping rocks on Patricia Beach directly violates this principle. It compromises the character of our shoreline, destroys recreational use, and undermines sustainability for future generations. Shoreline owners continue to strip trees, build unstable structures, and dump brush on public land accelerating erosion. At Scott's Point, trees are cut for views and lawns mowed to the bank, worsening damage. Now they propose dumping rocks on treaty land to fix a problem they created. Council has already approved two revetments under Ms. Jones and Mr. Craft at King Edward Alexandra beaches and Kanawha beaches. Low water has spared us so far, but high water and sand loss are inevitable. These structures remain untested, under pressure, and their impact on public beaches is unknown. Now, one of our last public beaches is at risk. Meanwhile, the Shoreline Advisory Committee plans the fate of our beaches without community input. Emails to SAC were withheld, indigenous and environmental perspectives ignored, and the committee run by a shoreline counselor pushes to allow decks and stairs on treaty land. Is this rock revetment simply a platform for more private access and land giveaways? Even if approved, the banks are unstable. In 2012, the Shoreline Advisory Committee reached out to the community. They came up with a list of what the community wanted. Has the current committee reached out since this plan came to light? Council, you have a choice. You can listen to the science, to the community, and to the land, or you can ignore it and watch our beaches vanish. What kind of legacy do you want to leave? Erosion is an important issue here, but this is also about equity, access, and accountability. Why are these decisions being made in the off-season when most BB residents aren't here? Why are public meetings held in November when people must drive highways in the dark or struggle with tech? If you truly value community input, holding meetings in July and August when the community... You should hold meetings in July and August when the community is present. A land acknowledgement is not enough. Without true respect for the land, the plan is destructive, this plan, for the land. This plan is destructive and will not protect the beaches. We are all treaty people, and this is treaty land. Reconciliation requires consultation, not exclusion. It's time to reject the plan and demand meaningful dialogue. We need natural land-based solutions, not rock dumps. There are more innovative options out there. A previous member of SAC attempted to discuss better environmental options, and they were dismissed. But what about the community? These options would benefit everyone, not just a few. Are all shoreline owners even on board with this project? Who decides what happens to treaty land, your neighbor, you, or the community? Is this another divisive move by a vocal view? We don't need, we don't even know who has requested this work. Any plan we adopt must put the natural beaches at the forefront, not just private property protection. It must be community-minded and consistent with the values we all share. Real public consultation is essential. That means more than a late-night meeting in the off-season. It means accessible, transparent dialogue when the community is present. We already have strong guidelines for what the community wants in the 2012 Shoreline Advisory Committee report. It provides valuable background and recommendations. We should return to that work on it and build on it, not ignore it. The Shoreline Advisory Committee must change. Protection of beaches and treaty land must be at the forefront of its mission. SAC must represent the full community, free of conflicts, open to best practices, and direct... directly engaged. They must show genuine commitment to protecting the beaches, receive community emails, and be a part of the community engagement. Plans must follow science, not cherry pick pieces of it. Shoreline property owners also need education about how their own actions increase erosion risks: clearcutting trees for views, creating lawns down to banks, climbing up and down slopes, dumping brush, or dragging boats across fragile banks. These practices accelerate erosion and undermine the very land they want to protect. Finally, we must seriously research and commit to natural shoreline solutions, options that protect both beaches and private property. These approaches exist, they are science-based, and they even align with our responsibility to preserve the land for everyone. Council, you're stewards of this land, not servants of shoreline. Your duty is to protect Victoria Beach, its people, its history, its future. Do not let Patricia Beach disappear. Approving the plan would violate your own bylaws and the development plan. It sets a dangerous precedent, private interests again overriding community rights, science, and law. That is not stewardship, it's abdication. Let's bring hope back to Victoria Beach. Let's choose preservation over destruction, inclusion over exclusion, and community over convenience. We can do better, we must do better. Let's protect what we love together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Nicholas Giustu. Nicholas, I'm assuming you're online?
Yeah, I'm also presenting virtually. Hopefully you guys can hear me now.
Yes, we can. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. In 2023, when Ms. Jones and Mr. Kraft made a similar proposal to build a revetment on King Edward and Alexandra Beach, over the course of two meetings, 12 members of this community provided eloquent and informative presentations, explaining both that the proposed revetment would inevitably lead to the eventual loss of those beaches, and that that would be an unacceptable outcome. Although some of those points will doubtless be repeated tonight, I encourage all members of council and of the Shoreline Advisory Committee to watch the recordings of those two sessions. They are highly educational about the destructive effects of revetments on beaches, and they also illustrate that the majority of this community values our beaches and adamantly seeks to have them protected. Unfortunately, back then, council ignored the wishes of the community, not to mention common sense, and allowed the construction of that revetment. And equally unfortunately, we find ourselves faced with another proposal from Ms. Jones and Mr. Kraft, who seek to construct another revetment and destroy another beach. And this will destroy Patricia and Arthur, make no mistake about that. The current proposal includes quotes from the Baird Report, but it does so highly selectively. It does not quote the repeated point in the report that clearly states that at Victoria Beach, like everywhere else, that revetments have ever been constructed, they will lead to beach loss. The report is equally explicit that the sand on our beaches actually comes from the very erosion of the cliffs, which is required to naturally replenish it. The sand does not come from the lake, as some people mistakenly believe. Lake Winnipeg has a clay bottom. As the Baird Report says clearly on page 14, "The primary source of sediment for beach building is the eroding sandbanks within the RMBB." And the Baird Report is clear and unequivocal: Building revetments will lead to beach loss, which can only be mitigated with costly sand replenishment. The loss of our beaches would be tragic, even if there are semis cannot see that. It would also be contrary to the requirements of both the zoning bylaw and the development plan. According to the zoning bylaw, section 2.14 sub E, "Proposed development must not impose undue risk to people, property, or water quality, nor interfere with or unduly compromise the character, enjoyment, or sustainability of private or public property. An existing recreational land uses and areas should be protected from potentially incompatible land uses that may threaten the ongoing viability of those areas in accordance with the development plan." The loss of Patricia and Arthur Beach would violate every word of that section. Now it is true that the zoning bylaw does say that erosion protection measures are a conditional use, and therefore they may be permitted, but that does not mean that all such structures must be permitted, especially not on public land. Such permission can always be refused. And when it will destroy our public beaches in direct opposition to both the principles and the specific requirements in the zoning bylaw and the development plan, then permission must be refused. To do otherwise would render the requirements in those documents meaningless. Furthermore, acting in contravention of the zoning bylaw and/or the development plan may open the RM to legal challenges. Even if one were only concerned with private property protection and believed that sacrificing our public beaches was a small price to pay for that, much of the currently proposed revetment would be built in areas where there is a significant demand of land between the top of the cliffs and the private property lines. It will be decades upon decades, if not centuries, before erosion moves the cliff edge past those property lines in those areas, turning the barest edges of the private properties to a slope, instead of level ground. It would be still further decades before any actual structure was remotely threatened. Even the proposal document itself, though it tries to focus attention away from this fact, acknowledges that for a significant portion of the stretch under discussion, there is no chance that erosion will affect private land anytime remotely soon. Precisely because there is no case to be made that most of this revetment is in any way necessary to protect private land, the proposal document includes an uncharacteristic peon to public land, but only to public land at the top of the cliffs, referring to only that land at the top as "significant, historically important." On the other hand, the proposal document barely mentions the beaches at all, and contains nothing but their significance, about their historical importance in a beach community called Victoria Beach. In a particularly bizarre detail, the proposal document states that one section of the public land atop the cliff, Scotts Point, is allegedly worth almost $1 million, but it makes no attempt whatsoever to value the beaches upon which this revetment will be built and which it will ultimately destroy, beaches which its authors apparently view as worthless. The current proposal must also be considered in the context of the ongoing debate about private stairs upon these same public slopes. Anyone, and I'm not going to name names, but anyone who has advocated for private stairs which cause erosion simply has no credibility when they say that they are gravely concerned about preventing erosion. They're lying. This is about, at best, their belief that their property values will be increased if revetments are constructed, or that they will financially benefit from such construction, and at worst, it's a desire to take public land for themselves simply for the sake of doing so, for the sake of proving they can do so. And neither the Shoreline Advisory Committee nor council should indulge that. I will further add that it is somewhat unclear if the illegal revetment, which was constructed 15 years ago, literally in the middle of the night, because it was completely unauthorized, is intended to become part of the current proposal, or if it would otherwise be retroactively permitted as part of it. The original government went to court over that illegal revetment, and although a judge ordered that the structure remain in place until a full hearing could be held, unfortunately the matter never proceeded to a final determination that would have allowed for its removal. But at any rate, although council has recently condoned illegal construction of other private structures and public land, under no circumstances should the illegal revetment receive any sort of retroactive permit. Although I personally find it a lesser concern than the destruction of the beaches, it is also worth noting that there will yet again be a significant cost to the RM for proceeding with this proposal. Even though most of the construction itself will be paid for by private individuals, the RM will still pay for a section of the construction, presumably like with the revetments that have been built, the RM will assume all of the ongoing maintenance liability costs for the entire structure after a brief initial period for no apparent reason. And on top of that, there is the considerable expense of sand replenishment, which will run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars per replenishment every few years just for Patricia and Arthur alone, on top of the hundreds of thousands for the other beaches, none of which the RM has come remotely close to allocating yet. The RM has already paid a huge amount of taxpayer dollars for the revetments that have already been built on other beaches, and will be paying hundreds of thousands more within the next few years to deal with the consequences of the existing revetments. This financial irresponsibility must stop. Also, the proposal refers to Engtech as having been involved in the preparation, the design, but it is not clear if this was a full geotechnical assessment, as is specifically required by the development plan, section 3.2.3 sub B. If such a full assessment was performed, it was not made public as part of the proposal. Speaking of Engtech, I will note that with all respect to Mr. Topping, the engineer advises the SAC, that's his own firm, which was apparently involved with the proposal, and therefore it appears he is in a conflict of interest, and he should recuse himself from providing advice to SAC regarding this proposal, in accordance with his obligations both to the committee and to his profession. In such circumstances, SAC would of course need to find another expert with similar credentials to advise it prior to making any recommendations. In conclusion, I urge the Shoreline Advisory Committee not to share council's mistake and to recommend against this proposal, and I urge council not to repeat its own past mistakes yet again, and to for once listen to reason, to listen to science, and to listen to this community. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We're not really here to ask you questions unless we need to clarify something, we're here to listen. So I appreciate your presentation. Is there any clarification anybody would like?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nicholas. We'll move on next to Mike Mason, please. I'm assuming you're online as well, Mike?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a surprise. Go ahead, sir.
I'm always happy to be here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Mason, and I represent the Victoria Beach Cottage Owners Association. As I present tonight, you've all met me before, I want you to think of some other voices that you've recently heard from. You heard from a backwater owner yesterday who does not support this proposal. You heard from a shoreline property owner last week who does not support this proposal. The Baird Report on page 32 states that in order to preserve the beach, it is important that the tow protection is done in conjunction with beach nourishment that is maintained over time. It needs to be done in conjunction. BBCOA opposes the current proposal. To be clear, we do not oppose approaches to shoreline protection that have the stated goal and are backed by science to preserve the beaches. Council has previously approved the same revetments on King Edward, Alex, and Canot. These structures were not the recommended structures by the Baird Report. To be clear, the Baird Report on page 11 recommends beach nourishment with anchoring structures, groynes, offshore breakwaters, and tow protection for the sand block. The tow revetments were built despite not meeting the recommendations of Baird. They have not included beach nourishment and anchoring structures. What process is currently in place to measure the efficacy of the King Edward, Alex, and Canot revetments? To my knowledge, there's no current monitoring process. Yet here we are on the cusp of this council approving another project to armor another beach again in the off-season. This off-season timing is a direct tactic by the applicants to have as little pushback as possible from the greater community. Please note, there is a long history of not involving the greater community. 15 years ago, some shoreline property owners along King Edward and Alex decided that revetments needed to be built on the public beaches. They didn't work with the community to develop a plan. Then a year or two later, an illegal revetment was built in Arthur. No community engagement whatsoever. In the last few years, revetments have been built on Canot, King Edward, and Alex, as you're all aware of, but there was no community engagement. To be clear, community engagement is prospective. It's working in advance with engaged community members who may have a difference of opinion to bridge the divides on the use of our public land. Respectfully, council does have the responsibility for meaningful community engagement to inform their decisions on important matters. The best example of meaningful community engagement was back in 2012 through the Shoreline Advisory Committee, when all community members were included as stakeholders to provide their thoughts, their opinions through surveys, open houses, and community member presentations. Then a thoughtful report was written. This was the last time we saw this type of true engagement. Tonight, I appear representing BBCOA as a reaction to another application for a revetment on public land. This is a reaction, not community engagement. Frankly, it's somewhat unbelievable that the unnamed proponents for this project think that they alone should decide what happens on public land. Do they think that the rest of us should not have a voice about the future of our public beaches? The revetments that were built have yet to be tested against time, high winds and high water. The Victoria Beach shoreline has endured several years of low water without serious wave action reaching the bluffs. While this is all very advantageous to the entire community, it would be unrealistic to think it will continue indefinitely and to enjoy the freedom from high-water storms battering our shores. The high-water storms' impact on the revetments, the bluffs, and the beaches is completely unknown and untested. There are many concerns with the current proposal. Who are the applicants? The applicants state property owners behind Patricia and Arthur beaches. Is this all the property owners, or only some of them? We know that some have opted out, but we don't know who the names are. The application lists project benefits, including erosion protection, a factor of safety for buildings is improved, and improved erosion protection for municipal stairs if the rocks are tied into the project. The stated project benefits do not mention any benefit to the beach. The detriment to the beach is clearly stated on multiple occasions in the Baird Report, which indicates, "Armoring the bluff tow with a rock revetment on Patricia and Arthur Beach will eventually disappear." This is page 72 and 73. Council has received concerns from shoreline property owners on this reach with this exact concern from the Baird Report, property owners who did not sign on to this project. This is a significant cautionary tale from the most exhaustive technical study ever completed on the shoreline by expert credential scientists, including a coastal geomorphologist and an engineer. I'm going to read the statement again one more time. "Armoring the bluff tow with a rock revetment at Patricia and Arthur, the beach will eventually disappear." Baird did not insert this statement by accident or happenstance. It was included by a coastal engineer as a cautionary statement to give council and all of us pause to consider the long-term implications of armoring the shoreline. The long-term implications are dire. Some say, "Look at the beaches with tow protection now, the beaches are wide, there's sand." Make no mistake, the revetments have only been there two years, ensuring low water, they have not been tested. Experts do tell us that over time, the beaches will be scoured and sand deposits depleted. Please note that the revetments built at King Edward, Alex, and Canot have never included sand replenishments for significant efforts to promote native vegetations. Are there other options? Yes, of course there are. "Victoria Beach Cottage Owners Association is asking council to reject the application and refocus the efforts of this group to seek out and implement nature-based solutions." A coastal engineer familiar with Victoria Beach has written that ultimately, preserving natural coastlines and implementing nature-based solutions to solve coastal hazards is the path to a more sustainable future. That coastal engineer is Pete Suzick, who did write the Baird Report in 2014. Now in 2025, Pete Suzick works with communities to develop solutions to coastal problems that respect the integrated nature, the physical, ecological, and social components of our coastal systems, to preserve natural coastlines and implement nature-based solutions, which are often referred to as soft armoring or bioengineering. According to the Alberta Environment and Sustainable Development Resource, the most successful and least costly approach to dealing with erosion problems on lake shorelines involves mimicking nature's own design and using soft armoring or bioengineering, including native vegetation, sand, and rocks. They indicate that hard armoring, tow revetments, retaining walls have been traditionally used as erosion protection along shorelines. These methods, however, are destructive to the environment to implement and difficult to maintain successfully over a long period of time. They also indicate that hard armoring enhances erosion of the shoreline at the base and the sides of the revetments, especially if it's not contiguous. It disrupts the normal flow and filtration of water from upland. It provides almost no natural habitat for wildlife and are expensive and difficult to fix. Sea Tech in 2016, they said the best approach to arrest shoreline erosion is to replicate or copy the natural shoreline. A few additional notes and concerns that pertain to this application on our public beaches. Page five of the revetment application, erosion of the upper bank will contribute to nourishing the lower beach in the future. This is an assertion. Who has made this statement or assertion? Is there scientific evidence to back up this assertion? Page six of the application, the proposed tow protection will help lessen erosion, but it will not stabilize the top of the bank. The proponents acknowledge that the tow protection, same design as King Edward, Alex, and Canot, will not stabilize the top of the bank. These are the very same banks in the VRA that are described by experts as unstable and at risk of failure. Yet, these are the very same people that have pushed hard to have the right to build stairs on these banks. To be clear, they want this protection to protect the private property, but they are not willing, as a group, to make a commitment to protect the unstable banks by publicly committing to not building stairs or decks on public land. Stairs of convenience would represent creeping privatization of our public space and are at odds with protecting unstable banks. Additionally, please note that the current proposal before council should also not be approved by the Shoreline Advisory Committee, as per the terms of reference. as per the terms of reference for the committee, which specifically state that committee will support the municipality's goal of providing responsible shoreline management, which is inclusive to both beach preservation and thoughtful, reasonable shoreline and property protection. This proposal is missing key features to achieve beach preservation. In closing, I'll leave you with these findings from the previous public consultation referenced in the Baird Report. The findings should be your guide. The findings are from the...
Your time is up, Mike.
Can I?
No.
Five times?
No, your time's up.
Okay, I'll leave you with the last point. The last point is the majority from that public consultation was opposed to revetments along public beaches and that most people agree that preserving the beaches perpetuity should be the first priority.
Thank you.
Tonight, we're asking you to be mindful of those findings.
Thank you, Mike. Your time is up, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments, gentlemen?
Nope.
All right.
Can we ask a question?
No, sorry. If you'd like to speak, you can come up to the microphone when there's an opportunity.
Okay, I understand questions.
Up next, please, is Blake Taylor, and I know you're online, Blake.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Oh, good. My name's Blake Taylor and I'm a longtime seasonal resident of the Victoria Beach vehicle-restricted area. And I'd like to thank council for holding a public hearing. I wish it was in the summer. But thank you for holding one and for allowing me to speak on this issue. My comments are intended to assist the shoreline property owners, all other residents and council in making the best decisions regarding shoreline management. Victoria Beach has enjoyed several years of low water and without any serious wave action reaching the bluffs. And while this is very advantageous to the entire community, it'd be unrealistic to think that this will continue indefinitely and that we won't be able to enjoy freedom from high water storms battering our shorelines forever. Now with all due respect, because of these years of low water, the new toe revetments at King Edward and Canot beaches have not been tested. Their impact on the bluffs and the beaches is as yet unknown. And I'd like to add, because it's come up, that the notion that should, in the unfortunate event, which I hope never happens anytime soon, that the erosion of the bluff would intrude on private property, that somehow private property owners would be able to do whatever they want at that point, is ridiculous. There's been a number of things mentioned already about bylaws, but there's several bylaws, including the building code, that give council the power to control what is built anywhere on private property, certainly including on the shoreline. So the notion that the private property owners would be able to do whatever they want if erosion intrudes into their property is incorrect. Council will still have control over that. None of us can do whatever we want on our own property. The proposed rock revetment toe protection for Patricia, King Edward raises certain concerns about the future of the beaches. Concerns are raised in the Victoria Beach shoreline management plan, which states that rock revetments at the bluff toe will cause these beaches to disappear. The report states on page seventy-two and repeats on page seventy-three regarding Reach Five, North and South, Patricia to Clubhouse Beach, that armoring bluff toe with rock revetment at Patricia and Arthur, the beach will eventually disappear. And they recommend constructing groynes south of Clubhouse to enhance Clubhouse Beach. It appears that the shoreline management plan proposes that a rock revetment at the toe of Patricia and Arthur will lead to the sacrifice of those sand beaches while adding a groin to protect Clubhouse Beach. Well, why is the current proposal accepting this fourth option from the Baird Report? Have council and the bill proponents explored the option that has gained so much popularity since the Baird Report was written? Natural bluff armoring, armoring with vegetation and other natural elements, as in the living shoreline example? Now, I'll discuss this option in a moment. Is council and the plans proponents, are council and the plans proponents comfortable with the beaches at Patricia and Arthur eventually disappearing? Or does council disagree with the VB shoreline management plan commissioned and written by Baird Engineering at a cost of over $600,000? If the toe revetment goes ahead, what will the proponents, together with council, do to preserve these sand beaches? Will soft armoring techniques be used in conjunction with the rock revetments? If so, who will pay for the vegetation and other materials? All taxpayers or the lakefront residents? If beach nourishment is part of the plan to preserve the beaches, and we know there is a budget for this, albeit inadequate, who will pay? All taxpayers or the lakefront residents? Note that rock revetments are known to be more expensive to maintain than soft armor. Will all taxpayers pay for the long-term maintenance of these newly proposed rock revetments? As is already the case with Canot and King Edward revetments. Now regarding the soft armor option that I mentioned, note what Watersheds Canada says about soft versus hard armoring of shorelines. Watersheds Canada on December eighteenth, 2024, published this, I quote, "So is softening your shoreline property really the soft choice? Now that we know the ecological and economic benefits and beauty of soft shorelines, we can challenge the misconception that natural shorelines are inferior to hardened infrastructure with shoreline protection. Will you break the status quo and soften your shoreline for greater shoreline stability?" Note that, note what the Alberta Environment and Sustainable Development says. Quote, "Soft techniques absorb the energy of the waves along the shoreline, reducing the potential for erosion. Strengthen the shoreline long-term, prevent ongoing maintenance and maintain an enhanced natural habitat." Hard armoring has been traditionally used as erosion protection along shorelines, and these methods, however, are difficult to implement and maintain successfully over a long period of time. In addition, these techniques are often more expensive than soft armoring techniques and require the use of heavy equipment, which causes damage to sensitive areas. Our techniques enhance erosion of the shoreline at the basin sides." End of quote. So according to the cited articles, as well as many others, we have hard armor being difficult and expensive to maintain over a long period, enhancing erosion at the basins and sides and being certainly more expensive than soft armoring techniques versus soft armoring, which provides greater shoreline stability. I'm providing three examples of bioengineering or soft armoring. As the articles I have mentioned and many others point out, while hard armoring causes wave energy to be reflected back, digging up the sand beach and sending it out, soft armor absorbs the wave energy, keeping both the beach and the sand bluff in place. That is why places like Miami Beach use soft armor. Lon, do you have those three photos I sent you?
Yep.
Could you put them up? There are three examples of soft armor used to protect both the land and the sand beach. There. The first one, Miami Beach. Sand beach with soft armor protecting the road embankment. The second one is from British Columbia. Sand beach with shoreline bluff armored with logs and vegetation. And the third one, this little small one right there on my screen, also from BC, a sand beach between rocky points. Sounds familiar in BC. Bluff is armored with logs and living vegetation. One more point, which is incidental, but has caused some confusion. I'd like to address a misconception that in a worst-case scenario, and that I sincerely hope will not come anytime soon, should the bluff eventually erode onto private property, that the entire beach would no longer be public. Now, having checked with provincial land titles, land management and other authorities, I can assure everyone that the only portion of beach that would be private is that within the surveyed property line of the private lot. And all beach outside of the property line would remain public. In conclusion, I ask council and the community to consider soft armoring of the beaches. At whether instead of or in addition to the proposed rock revetment. And to take into consideration the long-term future costs to taxpayers. And above all, the future for both the sand beaches and the bluffs. I'm sending my presentation in written form to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any clarifications, gentlemen?
Nope.
All right. Thank you very much, Blake. We'll now open the questions for the comments and presentations to the floor. But I also need to make sure that we don't miss out anyone who would like to speak virtually. So if you would like to speak virtually, could you please let me know? I'm not hearing anything virtually, so I will go to the floor. If you would like to speak, please get to the microphone.
There was the word gentleman. We tried to call out it.
Would you like to come to the microphone? Oh, okay.
I don't think they all want to speak.
Oh.
I wasn't clear.
Hello. My name is Gordon Chalice. On the land title, it's Basil Gordon Chalice and Alison Lee Chalice. We live on, well, we live in Winnipeg, but our cottage is two o'clock at First Avenue in Victoria Beach. So we're very close to the Arthur stairs that lead to Arthur and Patricia beaches. We certainly noticed with a lot of sadness the failure of the revetment along Arthur Beach around the stairs. When we first noticed the rocks being placed, they were up almost to the top of the cliff. And now they're all basically flat on the shoreline. And in right at the moment, low water year, you can still walk along that area of beach. But most years that we've owned this cottage, which is about nineteen years now, it's been impossible to walk along without slipping on the rocks that are wet and, you know, with green stuff all over the place. So it's, you know, certainly has caused a lot of disgruntlement and problems with enjoying the beach. So I did hear that there's some proposal, part of the proposal, that is going to fix part of that issue. That sounds good, but hopefully, based on what I've heard from other people, that won't necessarily solve the beach issues. One thing that I had heard, and I wanted to ask this question because it may not be accurate, but someone had said that in order to get access to the beach to do this work, they're going to remove the large tree that's right at the Arthur stairs. And my belief is that that tree is one of the last structures, natural structures that's actually protecting that piece of shoreline.
They will be using access from Clubhouse Beach. They're not going to be coming down on you.
Thank you. Glad to hear that. But that was a concern and I certainly wanted to raise that as an issue that had been a part of the consideration. I think what I heard from the first presenter sounded good, but then when I heard some of this other statements about it does protect the shoreline, but doesn't protect the beaches. So that's certainly an issue of concern. I mean, we pay very high taxes, this year extremely high taxes because of our property values. And I assure you that if the beaches disappear, those property values will plummet. Your revenue for the municipality will plummet and the revenue for the Lord's South School Division, who basically are stealing money from us to pay for a few students to go to their schools, will plummet. So you need to think about that issue alone because that issue alone means all of us will suffer by reduced property values and reduced enjoyment of the beaches. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any clarifications, gentlemen? I'm sorry, Stuart. I'm just going to go to the gentleman in the back. We have his hand up first, if you don't mind.
Thank you. My name is Murray Nagler.
Could you use the microphone, Mr. Nagler?
I'll let everybody hear me. What's your name, sir? Murray Nagler. One twenty-one Sunset. Really interesting presentation by everybody today. I commend people, the amount of study and work they did. I really have more questions than anything else. One of my questions was, there is talk about the natural-based solutions of armoring it. I don't, I would like to have some examples of it to see where it's done here and just judging how well it's worked. I haven't seen any. I don't even know what it looks like. The comment on Miami Beach in BC, keep in mind, they don't have ice there, so it's a little different climate. So it's not really a fair comparison climate what they have. And Miami Beach does replenish it. It actually gets a lot of sand from Jamaica. They take sand from Jamaica to put on Miami Beach. The only place that I know where there has been long-term hardscape to protect the shoreline is the road going to the dock. It's all rocks all on the side. I don't know how long they've been there, but I noticed that the road hasn't disappeared and they must have been put there for a reason because if, I assume that those rocks were going to put there, that road would have been disappeared a long time ago. So that's the only example I know where hardscape has been somewhat effective. And I know the Yacht Club has a pretty nice beach, so it really hasn't affected the beach at Yacht Club. That's really all I, I was just curious whether there is some examples of where the natural-based solutions have been used and how successful they are. Not in Miami Beach or not in BC, but here. I'd be curious to find out. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't answer those questions.
All right.
Mr. Jusso?
Microphone's working? Okay. Basically, very quickly, my presentation actually is provided both by myself and also by Chris Smith and Lee Smith at four twenty eighth Avenue, who are also property owners. But before I begin our presentation, I would like to read out a letter that you have received from Patricia Gartrout. This is a letter from Pat, and she is writing to Laura Jones. Hello, Laura. I'm writing to let you know that I will not be participating in your erosion protection project for Patricia Beach. I'm basing my decision on information from the Baird Report as follows. Appendix B, shoreline management options, shoreline management plan. Erosion mitigation and beach enhancement options. Reach Three, King Edward and Alexandra. Option Three. Reach Five, North, Patricia to Clubhouse. Option Four. Reach Five, South, Patricia to Clubhouse. Option Four. You have chosen the options for each area listed above. You have chosen the options for each area listed above as stated, quote, "Armoring bluff toe with rock revetment," unquote. Each of these options comes with the same dire warning in parentheses, quote, "The beach will eventually disappear," unquote. The option you are choosing will destroy all of the above-mentioned beaches over time. I will not normally choose to participate in an activity that will have a devastating effect on our beaches, especially in light of the fact that Baird lists other less destructive possible options. I do not wish the rocks placed on the beach in front of my property. Furthermore, on another matter, the residue, i.e. fallen bushes, weeds, new growth grass, which currently sits on, quote, "my waterfront", is now naturally protecting the bank in front of my cottage. I, Patricia Gartral, hereby request that this area be left undisturbed by heavy equipment or otherwise being used to create this project on Patricia Beach. Thanking you in advance for your cooperation in this matter. Patricia Gartral. You have received a copy of this letter, so you have it in your files. Now, as to the presentation for myself and from Chris Smith and Elise Smith, this is the presentation. According to the zoning bylaw 1651, section 214, developments in the riparian zone, including erosion protection measures, are only permissible under clause E if they do not, quote, "impose undue risk to people, property, or water quality, nor interfere with or duly compromise the character, enjoyment, or sustainability of private or public property." And, quote, "existing recreational uses and areas should be protected for potentially incompatible land uses that may threaten the ongoing viability of those areas in accordance with the development plan," end of quote. The current proposal for the erosion barrier of Patricia Arthur Beaches does not satisfy these criteria and therefore cannot be recommended by this act or permitted by the council. The detrimental impact of shoreline armoring structures on adjacent beaches is well established. The 2001 Linguistic Shoreline Management Handbook clearly states that, quote, "Any beach in front of an armored shoreline will normally diminish in width over time as the nearshore profile erodes and the beach will eventually disappear." Pages 32, 33. The same point is clearly indicated by the Baird Report and Shoreline Management Plan for Patricia Arthur Beaches. Okay? This was led by the expert, engineer Pete Zuzak. All conclusions were drawn from a detailed study of local conditions. The proposed project proposal submitted by Laura Jones refers to the Baird Plan but admits mentioning how the proposed structure will impact the beaches because the evidence from the Baird Report is absolutely damning. In Baird Shoreline Management Plan, it clearly states of the reaches covering Patricia and Arthur Beaches, 72 and 73, that the consequence of, quote, "armoring bluff toe with rock revetment" is that the beach will eventually disappear. The Baird Management Plan clearly states that groynes or breakwaters will be required for this option to anchor sand as well as regular sand replacement. So the current erosion barrier proposal does not include any provisions for groynes or breakwaters, which the Baird Report is unambiguous but be necessary to preserve the adjacent beaches. A so-called sand replacement fund contains only a fraction of what will be required to pay for sand nourishment of the beaches already armored, let alone of further two reaches. On 3rd October 2023, Penny McMorris stated that the cost of sand replacement for King Edward and Alexandra Beach would cost $460,000 per installment, while creating a fund that only sparked out $25,000 a year. Given that the cumulative cost of nourishing all three beaches would exceed $1 million every five to 10 years according to Penn's estimate, this is an absurdly inadequate fund. It is equivalent to law and property. I'll skip the next part and go to the next page. Okay. Without measures to preserve our leisure beaches, including the full costing for sand replacement groynes and breakwaters, the current proposal does not satisfy the criteria in the zoning bylaws. Basement Council emails obtained to support a Freedom of Information request put in concerning the King Edward and Alexandra revetment, which is the basis of the current design, it is clear that the council is fully aware that the beach will be irreparably damaged by these structures. On September 1st, 2023, Penny McMorris wrote the engineer who prepared the Baird Report, Pete Zuzak, to request his input. Mr. Zuzak responded the same day, writing, quote, "As we discussed many years ago, if you armor an eroding bluff shoreline, the beaches have a high probability of disappearing under most lake-level conditions. Maybe reemerge under the lowest lake-level scenarios." Mayor McMorris forwarded this response to council and the C.A.O., stating that the response from Mr. Zuzak was, quote, "For our eyes and ears only." And this information was never disclosed to the community. In an email to council on August 8, prior even to the proposal becoming public, Mayor McMorris wrote to council summary of the situation, which included the accurate summary of the Baird Report's conclusion that, quote, "Beaches will eventually disappear and property values will depreciate once the beaches disappear. This is not consistent with the draft development plan or the culture of the community." It is also important to note that the project proposal deliberately conflates separate reaches discussed in the Baird Plan to imply that armoring is recommended for both the south and north part of Reach Five with Patricia Beach and Bluffs. In fact, the plan clearly states on page 89 that there is, quote, "low risk," unquote, "from erosion to the southern beach. No beach armoring of any kind is suggested for this stretch, only sand replacement and groynes to enhance the beach itself." The proposal is thus explicitly contradicted by the Baird Plan. As for the north reach, the Baird Plan is unambiguous. The installing toe protection will cause the beach to disappear unless groynes or breakwaters and consistent sand replacement are provided, in the words of the plan. These measures are required, not optional, if the banks are armored and the beaches are not artificially maintained through provisions that the community cannot afford. Then they will be starved out of existence. Victoria Beach will become Victoria beachless. This proposal thus does not meet the standards set in the unambiguous wording of the zoning bylaw and the development plan. Revetments are not viable on our leisure beaches because they will lead to their destruction. Council must therefore reject the present proposal. Finally, I was on the beach today. I met with Mr. Kunkka and his group. And I pointed out to him, on the banks of the beaches, they are sand, they now have grass on them. In other words, there has been no erosion. He noticed that.
Thanks, sir. Thank you very much. Any clarification, gentlemen?
Nope.
All right, thank you. I thought I saw another hand up in the audience. Not seeing, oh, Karen?
Karen Boyd, 121 Sunset Boulevard. I wasn't going to speak today, but it's a few things that came up that I would like to point out. I am, my husband and I, we have lived up here for 25 years. We're not snowbirds, so we get to see this, what this lake does twelve months a year. I have all kinds of respect for the science. I have a science background. However, one of the things that you have to consider is that when you get research, you also have to apply that research to the local conditions. A lot of the studies that are being cited and talked about have been performed on oceanfront. Oceanfronts have very different variables than this lake. They have consistent prevailing winds. They have tides that are coming twice a day. Their water levels tend to be more stable. Their currents are more consistent, and the water is deeper. Lake Winnipeg is a much shallower lake. It has no tides. It has incredibly fluctuating water levels over the years. And the winds are not prevailing from any specific direction, which means that the waves come at our shorelines from all directions, from south, southwest, north. It doesn't come from the northeast because it's behind us. And in the last number of years, we have observed that the wind has been changing almost around the compass, around the compass within a week. In the last few days, it went from northwest to southeast, back to southwest, back to northwest. Now, what that does is it sends the waves at the shorelines at different angles, which means that the sand is moved in different directions throughout the course of the wind shifting. In the 25 years that we've lived here, I have been able to observe the shoreline and what the sand does in the course of the year. When we moved up here in 2001, we had along Kanot, a secondary bank, thanks to the lower water levels of the previous decade or so. There was a secondary bank that had filled up with the sand. And it was soft armored. It had vegetation. It had trees. It had grass. The point, King Edward Point, had a willow trees that were anchored into the sand. 2004, 2005, the water rose. The winds, the waves started approaching the shoreline. We had a storm. It washed out, over the next couple of years, the storms actually washed out the secondary bank because the waves are way too powerful for any soft armoring to hold. As the years went by, the water became higher and higher. And it started to, and then the storm of 2010 badly damaged our bank. I sat through those three days. I tell you, it was intriguing. So as much as I would love to have soft armoring protect our shorelines, it doesn't, it won't hold any kind of a storm. You don't need heavy waves to erode the bank. All you need is for the bank, for the rays to come up and nibble away at the bottom of the bank. It undermines the bank. It under pulls out all the sand from underneath. And then the top of the bank collapses. And that's, so when you put rock at the bottom of the bank, what it does is it prevents that gradual erosion of the sand that undermines the bank and drops the bluff. So it actually does help to protect the bluff. Now, the kind of toe protection that is being done now will not save us from the kind of storm we had in 2010. But it does slow down the erosion of the banks in lower water or in high water levels without that kind of a storm. Now, there was comment made about some of these protections not having been tested, I think, to differ. There was a full revetment placed at the pump house and at four properties towards the south. Those are put in place, I think, somewhere around 2007, maybe, 2000, whatever. Those revetments protected those properties in that storm of 2010. And that was a storm that moved rocks onto the pier. So those revetments protected the bank. After the storm in 1974, two property owners on the north side of the Fifth Ave of the Fist Stairs dumped rocks. It wasn't even engineered. They just dumped rocks. During that storm in 2010, the bank was damaged, yes, the trees stayed put, and it saved the bank. In those years, between '74 and the storm of 2010, the beach in front of that, those properties, was the widest of anyone along that stretch of Kanot. So as far as, from what I have observed over 25 years, it's that the sand beach is determined by the high water level, how heavy the waves are, the direction of the wind. In fact, if the winds come from southwest, it seems to bring sand in. If it comes from the north, it takes the sand in. And that's been a consistent observation over the last 25 years. So while I recognize the concern about losing the beach, according to the Baird Report, I think that we need to be a little more cautious and we need to recognize that there are variables that are flagged to Lake Winnipeg, but do not flag to some of the research that has been quoted. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't thank you. Sorry. Thank you very much. Is there any other persons who wish to speak tonight? I'm sorry, is young lady in the front? No, you guys are ahead of us. I'm sorry.
I just have a question. Where is the proposed access point on Clubhouse? Pier, Pier Point?
Yes, there is a small roadway that comes down Pier Point, yes.
Also, hard revetments have been tried out here. I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to try a soft revetment and see the difference between the two.
Can I get your name?
Maureen Hancock.
Maureen Hancock?
Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Any other comment? Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Havel Nessa, 371 First Avenue. Simple question and then a comment question on the answer. Simple question. If this project goes ahead in 2026, when is the end?
I don't understand the question.
If this project goes ahead, it has a start date, presumably has an end date. In 2026, when is the expected end of the project?
That's a question I don't have the answer to. Laura, do you have, or Wolf, do you have an answer to when the project may end in 2026?
Depending on the weather, we would be done before the late pause on by the end of March, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, we would be done, depending on when we would start. We anticipate the project maybe approximately six weeks.
Six weeks? Good. Okay. Because what I was thinking is, sometimes projects take longer. And I was thinking, if it gets into April, May, May, then I and other college owners want to go to the beach. And I was wondering, who gets priority? The project? Or would it all be?
You'll have priority, I mean.
Thank you, Wolf.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone?
I have a big official comment question.
Is it something new?
Yes.
Gordon Chalice again.
Can you use the microphone, please, Mr. Chalice?
Gordon Chalice. There's been a lot of concern about this proposal not including the groynes, if that's the right term, or the breakwater. Has anyone done any research to find out just how much those options cost?
I don't believe any research has been done recently, but in the Baird Report, not in the Baird Report, but we did ask Baird in 2015 to work on, to design a project with groynes and breakwaters, I believe, for Alex. and breakwaters, I believe, for Alex and King Edward. It was, again, I can't be completely accurate. It was well over a million, I believe, at that time.
It's not appropriate at that time.
And it would meet Fisheries and Oceans approval. And because of the way the lake freezes, it was also an issue, right, to?
Right.
To build out into the lake.
You can build it, but the ice will just take it out.
It may.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have exact costs for you. A lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any other comments, questions, concerns? Any clarity? All right, go ahead.
I just will say that SAC is currently in the process of submitting an application to the Climate Action funds that are available with federal government. And part of the proposed project is to do a pilot project involving natural vegetation. We hope we will get the grant. I'm excited about that possibility because I think letting nature do its work is probably not a bad idea.
All right, go ahead, Laura. I was wondering if we could provide some answers to some questions that came up. Is that allowed? Is that already counted?
Can other people then answer them?
Well, that's a good question. But there were questions posed to the people who were put to perform the revetment and the proponents of the revetment. So we'll start with that. Just steal the link when you want it. Do you want to go first or?
So a couple of things that were mentioned that we should address. The proposed revetment that we're proposing to do is not a complete design that was designed by Baird or a full geotechnical study done. This is a compromise situation that we've come up with to alleviate some of the concerns that the residents have about losing the beaches and also the property owners who we represent here losing their frontage of their cottages. So the design that we've come up with is a compromise situation. We recognize that a storm like 2010 will most likely overtop the structure. And there would be some erosion of the bank above the structure, which would further nourish the beach with the sand that's above the existing revetment that we're proposing to do. With regards to that, these revetments have not been tested. As was alluded to by the previous speaker, we did four properties by the pump house. And you can go down there at any time. There's still beach there. And the revetment protected all those properties there. So that has been tested. Additionally, that was, yeah, 2008 was the work done. And then there was some remedial maintenance work that was done after the 2010 storm. And the cost of that was less than $5,000 for the four properties. As insofar as other testing done after the 2010 storm, sandbags were installed along the King Edward, Alexander reaches to test what effect a hard revetment would have on the beach. And subsequently, the storm of, I believe it was 2014, when we again had high water, which overtopped that revetment. But again, it showed that the beaches were able to recover. And the beaches are still there as they were previous to any type of revetment along the shoreline there. We wanted to point that out. So again, this is a compromise situation. So we're not proposing something that the Baird report would consider a one-in-a-hundred-year storm. The Baird report also did not take into consideration the fact that Lake Winnipeg being regulated by Hydro, but also climate change has come into effect now. So what we're finding is that the climate change has impacted the lake levels in a way that was not predicted during the Baird report. As we can see right now, we were down on the beach today with the engineer from the province. And we were also down on the beach about a month ago or more when we first submitted this proposal. The amount of sand that has increased along the bank, there is over one foot of sand without any type of sand being drawn from the bank. This is all sand that's been blown up from the wind and the wave action from the lake. So the sand does definitely come from the lake in addition to some of the sand coming from the bluff. With regards to some of the pictures that were shown about soft revetments in areas in Florida and in B.C., those areas do not have a 20 to 30-foot sand bluff behind them. The sand bluff that we're experiencing or that have, especially on the Patricia Beach area, is something that they don't have. And that creates a very difficult situation for erosion. And as again, as mentioned, the protection that we're considering is going to protect more so with that nibbling effect that was alluded to with the water when it's not a full-blown storm, but where we have high water that is in the elevation of around 217 to 220 feet above sea level. And it'll protect the bank from being eroded and nibble away so that the top of the bank falls down. So that should be taken into consideration. Soft armor, as was also alluded to, does not work on Lake Winnipeg. There's been many attempts and and works done on the other side of the lake to try to find a soft vegetation revetment. The lake levels and the wind setup are just not conducive to that type. It erodes away the soft sand and soil. And then the roofs fail. And then ultimately, the entire structure fails. I think that's it, but if, yeah, no, no.
Okay. Yeah, there are a lot of great questions that were brought up. And I guess because this is the third time that we're up here, I didn't give a full summary of, you know, the Baird report was a suite of recommendations. It wasn't just for hard toll protection. It included regrading, drainage improvements, sand retention measures such as groynes and sand nourishment. So that's certainly acknowledged. But what private cottage owners who are coming to the table have said is that what we, we can't pay for the whole thing, right? And the community couldn't pay for the whole thing. The Baird report was this massive report that in effect, we weren't able to do anything with because it was too cost prohibitive. So the goal of this proposal is to carve out one piece of the puzzle, which is erosion that's coming from wave action and providing some bank stability. But it's not ignoring the fact that other complementary measures are certainly needed. But of course, you know, a handful of cottage owners can't pay for that for the entire community. The Baird report was meant to be for the entire community. It wasn't meant to be something that just a few private landowners would be paying for. So I wanted to bring that up. And also, public consultation was a recurring theme. And there has been, it seems, compared to many other communities, there's been quite extensive consultation on this issue since 2010, well documented. So I think that there has been quite a bit of consultation. You can find documentation on that that's going back 15 years now. I wanted to go through a few different pieces as well. You know, the whole issue of sand or erosion encroaching on private property and does that really have an impact to the community? And does that actually have an impact to the beach and beach ownership? I just did want to read this part of the Baird report. And there's other documentation to this effect. But back when Baird was conducting public consultation on various options that could be available to the Victoria Beach community, something that, something that they reminded, that's a quality pin, something that they reminded the community of was when managed retreat and keeping the beaches totally natural was a solution that was desired by some segments of the community. Baird explained that this is not a viable option since the public reserve is almost gone. And once the eroding bank is on private land, the beaches will no longer be on public land. So this is the Baird report. And I think it's an important part to remember and to consider. There's so many questions. Oh, there was a big question around, would this project involve retroactive permitting of existing rock protection that's on Arthur, north of the stairs? And that's not a part of this project proposal. That section is not included. There's a, actually, that's out of scope, so I mean. There was, I did want to make a point. There was some, people raised that there are a number of people who have anti-erosion protection sentiments and including the Victoria Beach Cottage Owners Association. And I did want to point out that the Victoria Beach Cottage Owners Association has so many papers. I understand that, you know, according to the bylaws, I'm a member of the association.
This is not answering a question.
Are you answering one of the questions that was, that came up tonight?
Well, tonight, a delegation was representing the Victoria Beach Cottage Owners Association. But according to the bylaws, unless this issue is brought forward in the motion, then the board members can't speak on behalf of the association. So I guess that's a point of clarification.
I think it's fair to say that the board is speaking on behalf of the board.
Yeah, I'd say that's right. Yeah. Thanks. And then, oh, there was a question on, you know, has Victoria Beach started a monitoring process, right? Like if we're installing erosion protection, have we started a monitoring process? And I think council could probably speak better to it, but do you want to?
Yes, we have. We did a sound survey two years ago. And the agreement was that should there be a large storm or a large wind event, wind and wave event, we would do another review. We would do a evaluation at that time. And it would be done by an engineer.
Okay, thanks. There is also a question around kind of the judgment of people who have put forward such a permit application. I did want to note that, you know, our permitting process is here that so that we can use it. And we shouldn't make moral judgments against people who want to submit a permit for approval or consideration. Okay, there is also a question on, I guess it was unclear, but this was from the engineer who was hired for review of this and design of this project about with the top of the bank, would it erode and contribute to sand nourishment below? And also a question around maybe if this project wouldn't stabilize the top of the bank, like why would we pursue it? And so to answer that, I think the question was, was that based on science, the science perhaps? But the answer is that a geotech engineer indicated that the top of the bank will erode over time until it reaches a stable slope. Right now, it's a fairly steep slope. So we expect that over time, it will, you know, go from here and start going this way. And as it does that, sand will tumble down onto the beach. And that was reiterated by the provincial engineer who came to site with us today. But, you know, despite the fact that it won't stabilize the top of the bank and that that erosion will contribute to beach nourishment, certainly, the property owners still think that it's a worthwhile investment to at least stabilize the bottom of the bank.
Can I ask for a question?
Sure.
If a revetment, a hard revetment, was meant to stabilize the top of the bank, it would have to go to the top of the bank. Is that correct?
So as some background, back in, I believe it was 2011, property owners along King Edward and Alexandra proposed something that would stabilize a lot more of the bank. It had to go a lot higher and then come out a lot further onto the beach. The footprint was so large that the community was, you know, really worried about this, like what kind of an impact will this have on the beach? So, yeah, I mean, to protect higher up, you need to build higher up and then you need to build much farther out.
Thank you.
No problem. I also wanted to note that, you know, there was a question around how could the SAC agree with something that only, that isn't considering the full gamut, like the sand nourishment and groynes and the variety of other measures that could be implemented and that should be implemented over time. And I just wanted to point out that the terms of reference for the Shoreline Advisory Committee do recognize that for one project to be able to accomplish all of those, that suite of measures is not realistic. It hasn't happened to date. And so each proposal is meant to be reviewed on its own merit. Of course, making some considerations for council on pluses and minuses and different considerations that are important. But not, not to not review a project because it can't hit all those marks because we've seen that no project has been able to to date. And we do need to make progress. There was a question from Gordon Chalice. I don't know if he wanted a little bit more information on the redesigned south of Arthur. Did you, did you get that or did you want more information on that?
I think I understood the concept that you're going to remove this small rocks, the failure, and put in something that's closer to the Baird representation.
So it would be removing those small rocks that maybe Wolf can speak to, why it would be more effective and less likely to scatter?
So the design that we have is, the size of rock that we use is based on engineering studies that study wave action and the amount of force that a wave has and what size boulder and what weight of boulder would be required to be moved by that wave action. So the rocks that were initially placed there, they were just too light. The design was based on a concept where you'd have like a river coming down out of a mountain. And that water would be flowing over top of these rocks. And the rocks would then slow down the force of the water. But it didn't take it to consider the wave action, which kind of pounds at it. So ultimately, that revetment, those rocks were all scattered on the beach. We did go back. One of the homeowners had us go clean up a portion of that beach back about, I think that was in around 2009. We went and cleaned up a portion of it so that it was more walkable. So what our proposal now is how we want to clean up the majority of that small rock. We will redesign it with a toll trench, which will have the four to five-foot toll rocks, which is consistent with the Baird report and other designs on the lake. We would then armor the back end of that with a geopextal fabric, which would prevent the fines from being washed away as in the soft armorment situation. We would then use that smaller rock against the geopextal fabric to protect it. And then the larger rocks would go over top of that to protect the complete armorment from the big wave action. Again, we are only going to a top elevation of 726 feet. The elevation where you're talking about at Arthur is approximately 732 feet above sea level. Moving further down Patricia, the top elevation is higher. So again, the revetment is to protect the bank from erosion in those years where the bank is just slightly being touched by the water and it's nibbling away the soft sand that's there, causing the bank to slump down and fall. That's the main goal of this. In a severe weather event like 2010, we will, you do not have a splash zone incorporated into that, which the Baird report suggests. The splash zone would again pick up 10 to 12 feet more of the beach. So again, we're trying to do, on behalf of the property owners, come up with a compromise that will recognize the concerns that people have of losing the beach as well as the concerns of losing their property. And we feel that the previous revetments that we've done have shown that this can be successful. The wild card in all of this, of course, is Mother Nature. I'm not going to stand here and say that at the lake level is that a consistent I'm not going to stand here and say that at the lake level is at a consistent 717 feet above sea level in the fall and we get three days of north wind, it's going to do damage. It doesn't matter whether there's a revetment or no revetment. Unless we armor the whole thing, which will then cause a loss of the beach, which we do not want. So this is why we're considering and proposing a compromise solution that does not entail the full blown revetment that will protect in a 100 year storm.
And sorry, just last, there were several people brought up nature based solutions and wondering like, what are nature based solutions? Can we explore them here? Why are we not exploring them here instead of rock protection? And so I think then some other people did speak to some different nature based solution options that are available and why sometimes they don't work depending on the site and the luxury of space that you may have. So in a new community where you can do a 99 foot setback and you have more space, that might be a more feasible option or a more gradual slope. But what I would, I mean, there's so much passion here toward the beach and incorporating nature based measures. And so I think, you know, hybrid options, when you don't have the luxury of space, hybrid options are ones that include gray, like rock, for example, and then with a mix of nature based approaches. So I really encourage people to put all their fire and talents and minds and hearts together on suggesting some nature based projects that could be complementary, that could help to protect against erosion. And yeah, like let's use our energy to accomplish some more of these measures.
Thank you. Stuart, did you have any questions?
Yeah, actually, two.
Can you stand up? Can you give Stuart? Yes, please, sorry, I want to hear that.
Okay, basically, this, how would I put it, revetment is going to cause erosion. This has been admitted just now by Wolf. And the other thing is that it's not going to be continuous. People have opted out. Okay, so in other words, if people, it's not a continuous line, it's even worse. So there's a problem there. And the idea, this could be an opportunity, as Laura has just said, to actually try alternate methods. In other words, there's no urgency. This beach has been that, like that for the last 15, 20 years. There's been no erosion on it, okay? There's no grass on the slopes. And therefore, this is a good time to try other methods as an experimental use. And that, I think the community would be willing to back. I am not willing to pay taxes to thousands and thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars for sand replenishment or for liabilities on a structure which will collapse.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead. Is this something new, Mr. Mason?
Well, it's really a comment or two, just to respond. I don't want to get into that before, but it's an opportunity to respond to a few questions.
Counsel? All right.
Thank you. I really just wanted to reiterate, which was the second line that I spoke tonight. BBCOA does not oppose shoreline protection that is mindful to preserving and protecting the beaches. In reference to the mandate of BBCOA, it's been very clear for decades. It's to preserve and protect the unique and historic nature of Victoria Beach. Preservation of our beaches falls clearly within that mandate. I did want to say, the concept of compromise is wonderful. And respectfully, I thank you for that concept. Compromise does need communication. Communication with the community to form a plan, to fund the plan, to preserve and protect our beaches and to protect the banks and private property. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Anyone? Go ahead, Steve.
So here's the, here are the questions that I wanted to ask earlier, which is, can we please, you had mentioned that you had spoken to an engineer and that they had said specific things. Can you please get that engineer to forward a full explanation of their position on fortification to council? To all of council specifically? And I would also, I would also like to hear what their concerns are, if any, on the design. And the last thing is, the studies that you had mentioned regarding the size of the rocks that you chose, if you could please forward those as well, I'd really appreciate it. And if we could then put those studies onto the website, then that might be some information that would be good for people to review.
Good points. Thanks, Steve. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you so much. One more chance for those online, if they wish to put their hand up. Don't know. I don't want to miss anyone. All right. I'm not seeing any hands up.
Hello. Hi.
Blake, is this something new, please?
Yep.
Quickly.
Well, it was mentioned that, that natural vegetation, I didn't give any examples from places with ice. The Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and I can't remember how many huge number of miles of shoreline that they have in Wisconsin that are get ice bound. But they talk about using natural, you know, natural shoreline protection. And I'll send you that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Any further comments? All right. Hearing done, I will now call this hearing closed. And it is almost eight o'clock. Thank you all for your comments. I can let you know that before five o'clock today, I received, council received several emails from residents in support and some emails from residents not in support. Those will all be added to the record for this public hearing. All right, I will propose a five or 10 minute break so people can rest. So please, 8:10, we'll be back here. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we are back. Thank you, everybody. It's now 10 after 8 on Tuesday, November 18th. We'll continue our council meeting. So we will move on to accounts and finances. Need a resolved following list of accounts be approved for payment? Check 13873 to 13928 in the amount of $3 million, $22,039.78. Credit charges in the amount of $4,183.07 for a total of $3,26,222.05. Nav a mover. Ian, thank you. Second? Steve, thank you very much. Ian, would you like to speak to this council table, please?
Absolutely. Well, it's a big number and certainly when I first saw it, I didn't know what that'd be. Then 2.5 million of that went towards self curate school for payment. And the second big number was $414,000 that was just an interim payment for the new fire hall. So when you take that away, you can see the rest of the items are much smaller. Wayne's backstory was $14,000, Arthur Alexander landfill is $14,000. Mr. Finance's property assessment is $53,000. And then GFL recycling was about $6,400.
Any comments, questions, gentlemen?
Well, that's cool.
All right. Any further comments? All those in favor? Barrett? Thank you. Moving on to other business. 7A is a custom work application for ready to move home. The resolution is be resolved to approve the custom work application number 2025 slash dash 006. Yeah, I have a mover, please. Thank you, Steve. Second? Ian, thank you. I had a look, I had an opportunity to visit the site today. And I'm glad you're still here, Wolf. Because I have a couple of questions and maybe counsel does as well, but the road allowance on Clearwater Cove, you said there were going to be blue tags?
Yep.
All the way down Clearwater Cove?
Well, they're just, the only place is from up to the bend, like from 504 Highway up to where the road bends to the north. Like you were at Sherry's there?
Yeah.
At that point, there's only some oak ribbons on the north side of the road.
Yes.
Very few there. And it's just brush there. Where the...
No, 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 it's just brush.
There was no big trees there because we've already moved three houses in there already.
So why do we have to remove these trees now?
The second house that's coming in there is wider. The mover was here and he wants 39 feet. The houses with overhangs is 34 feet. And where the trees that are in question are the spruce trees on the right hand side between 504 and the bend in the road, like the first 250 feet. And then, but the trees that were, that tree trees, like bigger trees, are dead balsam and spruce. There's, and maybe three blue birch trees.
Just seems like an awful lot of space to be removing on one road. Is there any plans to replant?
If maybe. Our plan is to not pull the trees off by the roots, just to trim them so that the root mass still stays there, so that they can regrow again.
Could you, could you, could you just sort of tie them back with that? Be pause, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah. No, there's...
What about the hydro poles that are there?
That's the problem is the hydro pole's there, so I can't cut the hydro pole down.
No, you can't.
So I got to go to the other side. So, I mean, the mover's going to be moving, the one house that doesn't require any tree removal is coming in on the 28th. And it's the same mover moving both houses. So I'll have another chance to talk to him at that point to see if we can mitigate the actual bigger trees that have to be removed. But I know between the hydro pole and the trees that we have to remove, there was only 36 feet. He wants 35.
Are you saying there's a second ready to move coming in?
Two of them coming in. One that I'm applying for is the second one, actually, because the first one doesn't require any tree removal.
I see.
So one's coming on the 28th and the other one's going on to Birch Haven. And that one isn't anticipated until March.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Steve?
I'm just more curious, like, we usually get a site plan for these types of things, don't we? At least the, like, the last time that our team was going in, we had a site plan.
I don't remember that, I'm sorry. Maybe you did.
So I don't understand why one was unattached to this, at least not in the package that I received.
Maybe it was just, do you have a site plan for this property, Wolf? For that probably the company, property owner?
Like where the building is actually getting located or on the road?
Yeah, the building's getting located where the road is. Especially in this case, all the trees that are going to be removed, like, but the general plan is for reforestation. You know, it's just that, all of that was submitted the last time that we went through this process with our team.
So the actual site where the houses are located, there's no trees that are being, there were no trees on the road allowance to get in there. Was it all been cleared back when I did the subdivision? So there were no trees in the front, on the public reserve in front of the property where the site where the house is going? The only place where there's trees that need to be removed is between 504 Highway and about 200, 300 feet in. And it's actually just up to the first driveway. And there's blue ribbons that are tagged in the trees there that indicate the self parameter of where we need to clear.
Okay, so you're not taking out all those trees with the blue ribbons? That's basically your marker?
Correct.
Okay, well, that makes me feel a little better. I don't know about those site plans, Steve, that's a good question.
I didn't ask for one. I asked for that Stucky Drive move, just because they were taking out so many, it seemed like, so they gave us a site plan. I think I might help make one. I thought, yeah, pictures where the trees are going, I thought that was enough.
Is there not a building permit application? Development is, are you guys?
Yeah, no, I have, yeah, permit was approved.
Actually, that's what we'd like to see.
Yeah, no, the building was approved from, I gave the plans to the building inspector and he was having issues with his computer, so I didn't actually receive them. Cavi sent me the permit, signed permit. I have that and I have a development permit for it also.
Does that help, Steve?
So it's just, this is this.
Do you see blue ribbons on the test? Everybody's not going to cut those trees down, that's just...
Okay, okay, that makes, that makes more sense.
Is that better?
Yeah, well, because I only have a general description and I'm not going to blow off them, so yeah.
But thank you for asking.
This looks okay, but it's kind of borderline. I think counsel often reconsider at one point there needed to be council approval for an RTM to even enter, or I mean, it's about as many years ago. I think we might have to take a closer look at the building permits to make sure that a given building is not just outrageously large and going to cause too much disruption.
Except that our building inspectors already approved it. Building permit development plan, development permit had already been received.
Well, that might require an amendment to one of our bylaws to get chance, council a chance to review the building permit.
Maybe, maybe it just should go back to Curtis to get more information on how much space is needed to move the house before he provides the permit, right?
It's already provided.
I know, but he didn't know that they needed 39 feet. So maybe that's a question he should ask before he gets the permit, just so it's all upfront and everybody knows, right?
And so when I applied for the permit, Curtis, I was the first thing that I said, what do I need to do? And he said, well, I don't have an issue with it. You have to send it to council. I said, what do I need to do? He said, take pictures and send it to council, it's just...
But that's, that's all I'm saying is that I'm not saying anything negative towards Curtis. I'm just saying, in his little checklist of things he does to put a building permit together, one of the questions should be the width, so to get an idea of how many trees need to be cut before he provides the permit. That's all. That would solve the problem, you need to change the bylaw, just ask the question.
Yeah, that could, that would be between council and Curtis to more clearly define this. Is roll or no, and it's there.
Ian, Wolf, do you have any idea how many trees you feel need to be trimmed?
Hey, when you say trees, in my mind, a tree that needs to be trimmed...
How would be trees?
A healthy tree that's over eight inches in diameter, two. A healthy tree that's over three inches in diameter, probably five. A pumper tree, which is a weed, there's probably a couple dozen. And realistically, I mean, Hydro's been trimming that road to get the trees off the hydro line there. I've bought a multi attacher for the excavator and can actually use that as demonstration to the public works, but that's a story for another day. The homeowner doesn't want to pay for that. He wants to trim the trees himself. He's a new resident from Switzerland. He's not really familiar with the area. Doesn't speak very much English, so it's a little bit hard to communicate. Otherwise, he would be, he would have done this application himself.
When are you expecting this RTM to be coming in?
He's expecting it before road restrictions come on, so sometime in before the middle of March. The foundation has been excavated and they're starting the concrete work tomorrow. You know, so there's, there's time. He's going to BC right now until the middle of December. So he wouldn't start trimming till he gets back.
Would he be open to repackaging?
Would he be open to replanting some trees along the way? Or is there going to be another RTM moving in that's going to take those out?
More than likely, Penny, there's going to be at least two more RTMs going on the road if not more. Because it's, it's the way to go, like. I mean, I've got two properties there and most likely they're going to put an RTM both of those ones if they don't sell, so.
Can you make it smaller than 39 feet wide?
Probably, yeah. Well, it's funny because his house is 28, but then there's a funny little jog and a roof extension and it's, it's the roof that's the problem. And what we could do is maybe wait until the house is coming down the road and just trim the top where the overhang is. But you know what it's like? But you know what it's like, you're paying those guys by the hour and they don't want to wait. And they, and if they're waiting, they just cut down. They have no respect.
I think we should impose a condition that if any trees over six inches in diameter are cut down, they need to be replanted.
Do we make that any healthy trees?
Healthy trees, that's fine.
Thank you.
Healthy trees.
There won't be none of those.
You know, I always worry when something big is being moved and a couple of guys have chainsaws, guess what happens? Things come down. So if that happens, they got to be replaced.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
You're not the property owner.
I'm not the property owner. But I'm speaking on just behalf, because I mean the...
Take it a condition.
Do we make it a condition? Would council be available to that, that we had a condition that any healthy trees over...
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with it, too. I am a little concerned, though, that the property owner is going to go up there with a chainsaw in March and the, or before March, and then the house is going to come later. I'd much rather him go the day of the house going down so that he's just not sort of guessing at how many trees he has to cut.
No, I...
Like I said, I know those one put on Evergreen Road and that's what they did. They did it the day of. It's not that complicated. This is a guy with a chainsaw goes ahead and says, okay, if they can make the turn, these streets have to go. If you go beforehand, it's what Irwin says, someone with a chainsaw, you can, you can go to town, right?
So the two main trees that are of concern, he's going to probably hire a tree removal guy to take those down because there's hydro lines and cottages right there? So the two, the two main ones, he's going to hire someone. Like I said, the rest is all, you know, three inches, four inches, it's not very big trees.
So we have a be it resolved to approve custom work application 2025-006 with conditions?
Yes.
And those conditions are? I'm relying on you here, Ron, because my memory's shot right now.
All I heard was any healthy trees with a, over a six inch diameter be replanted or replaced. What do you want them replaced by? 20 foot trees, eight foot trees?
Dissident. Non-candidorous. Go ahead, Steve.
Can I just make one point, though? Because you said that you might put a few more RTMs in there, right?
Well, yeah, because I own two properties there still. And that seems to be the most efficient way of...
Delegate sort of like back end date as to when you'd be moving those two bins? Because there's no point in making you replace them and then cut them down again and then replace them again, right? So...
I wouldn't go over 24 foot width so that I wouldn't have to cut any more trees.
But like, two years, three years from now, you know, like...
Life keeps changing, Steve. I can't really answer that. But if, if I did move another house in there, I wouldn't go to 28 with, stay with 24 foot so that it wouldn't be accommodable with what's already there and what's been cleared a half a dozen times already.
And the trees replanted by September 1st of 2026.
I, I only worry that it's the pain in the butt for you to plant and cut if that happens.
I mean, it's a road allowance. It's not in the restricted area. I'm sure if I had to get all my neighbors to sign up, I would have probably maybe one, but... I mean, the road's growing in right now. If you go past where the houses have been moved in, that's going to have to be cleared at the RTM expense pretty soon because it's, it's like a canopy. It's almost like a tunnel there already. And Hydro's already been down that road twice, cutting those trees down.
Can we stay with 2028? Because I'm worried.
Sure, 2028.
Because we have a decent amount of time.
Type inside the trees. You want to do that specific or...
Dissident.
Size? Five. You okay with that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Details. All right. Okay. Is everyone all right with those additions? Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Carried. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Wolf.
Can we go now?
No.
No. Do you have another application?
No, I don't.
You are free to go.
Thank you.
Quiet.
Thank you for...
Thank you. All right. Moving on to correspondence, correspondence information and announcements. I just want to say that some members of council and our new joinees next week at the AMN and our CAO will be attending the upcoming three day Association of Manitoka Municipalities Conference next week in Winnipeg. And we have one scheduled council meeting in December and that's on the 9th and one in January on the 20th of January. Anything else, gentlemen? All right. I'm going to move on to adjourn. Can you find it? Be it resolved on November 18th, 2025, regular meeting of council now be adjourned. Next meeting will be Tuesday, December 9th, 2025, the 6th, in Winnipeg, 2035. Ian Hoover. Steve, thank you. Ian, second. All those in favor?
All right.
Carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Frank.
Penny.
Penny.